...on Thursday, February 4th. Pastor Whitestone is here tonight to lead us in prayer. So I'd like everyone to please rise. Immediately after the prayer, we'll be saying the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us go to the Throne Room of Grace. Heavenly Father, we just come to you tonight and we thank you yet for another day. Lord, we just praise you for all that you do in our lives and we thank you that you care about every single aspect of our lives. And Lord, you have provided a way through prayer that we can come to you in all of times of need and all the times that we need your guidance and direction. So, Lord, tonight, we ask that we allow ourselves to humble ourselves and pray and come before you and ask you to open our minds and our hearts and just bring us into a united front that we can come and talk tonight about what we need to do in the community to lift up this community and present it as a wonderful community for those that are here. Lord, we long for you to be part of this. We long for you to touch our hearts and our lives and we just don't want to take it for granted. Lord, we want to invite you to be part of this night. Lord, we thank you for everything that you have done in the guidance and direction and all that you've done for us in the past and we know that if we keep our eyes focused on you, the Author and the Finisher of our faith, that you will guide and direct. So, Lord, we ask that you bless these leaders tonight and give them the strength and the guidance that they need. In Jesus' precious and holy name we pray. Amen.
The Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call, please.
Mayor's attorney.
Here.
Commissioner Avery.
Here.
Commissioner Henry.
Here.
Commissioner Allen.
Here.
Commissioner Simpson.
Here.
Commissioner Turner.
Here.
City manager letter.
Here.
Brings us to item 4A, which is a letter from Al, CODAT, from Algonak, basically asking us to enforce the laws about removing signage on telephone poles and all of our legal signs.
Make a motion to accept communication and place it on file.
Motion to support. Any discussion? Commissioner Avery?
Other than putting it in file, what are we going to do now in response to this message?
Well, it's up to you.
Up to me?
Yeah.
It's up to the commission then?
It's not an agenda item, so it's a communication. So if people would like it to be an agenda item, we can make it an agenda item and talk about it.
Well, when we get something like this, we should do more than just acknowledge that somebody sent us something and we are grateful they sent it.
Well, you and one other commissioner can request any agenda item to be put on the agenda, so Commissioner Lovett?
You want to put on the agenda? Now that we can do that? Or we have to do that?
I mean, you can, somebody could amend the agenda and put it on tonight.
Yeah, it doesn't have to be instant. I'm just curious as to...
Well, no. Commissioner Simpson?
Would it be appropriate maybe to save the discussion for a future meeting? Last meeting, we discussed how we would like to incorporate updates from the code official in regards to bike management. Maybe we reserve for that conversation as well and incorporate it to there.
I make a motion that we approach the question of both issues at the next solution meeting.
Support? Motion to support. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, we'll make an agenda item at the next meeting. Moving on to the public comment portion of the meeting. People in attendance are welcome to come to the podium. Address the commission. Please state your name and address and keep your comments to under five minutes.
My name's Luann Douglas and my husband Jim and I live at 108 North Water Street. And listening to the city commission meeting from last month and the discussion about the pavilion and moving the restrooms and building a new restroom, I guess just two points that we'd like to make. And one is that, you know, we would like to see what the plans are before this happens because it is, you know, adjacent to our property and we'd just like to see where it's going to be, how big it's going to be. And the other thought that we had was that, you know, looking at the drawing in the paper, and I know that's all preliminary, or I think it is, it seems like that's the farthest spot from the beach that you could get. And, you know, if kids, if it's primarily there for the beach and for the children to use, you wouldn't want the children, it's kind of an awkward way to get from the beach to where it is in that park. They would have to possibly, you know, cut through parked cars or walk in the street and we know how the traffic is a problem there anyway. So that's just a thought. But I do have a question, if you can answer it. When are, when is this anticipated? Do we even know? No? Any idea?
Well, they're going to work on a drawing and then, you know, they'll come back to the commission at some point, but I don't, I don't think there's a timetable set yet.
Well, before, he was going to hire an architect or possibly already has, it just seems that if there was some discussion about where might be the best place to put the pavilion and the restrooms considering, you know, other than just, oh, here's a good idea, let's put it here. And if there were some discussions about that before the architect drew it all up, that's just a thought. And maybe you've already done that. Thank you.
Bill Hoss, 203 Pleasant Street. And I've had a chance to do some thinking. You got PA 33. You got 3.045 mils that have cost $260,000. Let's divide that in two. A mil and a half is actually $130,000. Now I start thinking 300 Broadway, you know? We got things happening there. As I drove past when they were getting ready for Heritage Days, I see Bob Lepley sitting where the police cars used to be. Well, my brain starts thinking all the money that's going down. Apparently, you know, we had a problem. We wrongly terminated a police chief. Cost the taxpayers $43,000. You're paying them $38,000 plus $5,000 for expenses. So there's $43,000 going towards a mil and a half already. Now I start looking and thinking about this strategic solution, people. That's $5,000 a month times 12. $60,000, $43,000. Now for two years, the taxpayers have almost been taxed a mil and a half. We're getting nothing. Now, where's the city's responsibility to the homeowners? We got a property on 604 Broadway. It's rental property. We've got a car sitting in the driveway, smashed in the front, smashed in the back, you know, so we're collecting garbage there. Hang in the corner, go around down Pearl Street towards Bell River, 645. As of today, I looked at the county webpage. It's still registered to a dead man because he signed my PA 33 and then he died. But we got family or somebody living in that house. Now, we'll go around Pleasant Street and we'll hang left heading north towards the first two houses. Both of those houses are rental properties. We got a car sitting up in front of the garage, ain't moved in about, shit, three months. Now, the guy's a pretty good guy from what I can tell. He don't cause no problems in the neighborhood. Single dad gets his kid on the weekends, but still, it's a rental property. Put it in the garage if it's not registered. Now we go to 222, one more house over. Now we got a boat sitting in the front yard that was pushed off, been there for a couple months. I'll guarantee you that boat don't belong to that woman there who's renting the house. It's been pushed off. They've got a, actually, 222 is one of the, back when the days are really corrupt around here and you were able to build a house out of your garage. So there's a single family residential lot with only one title, but you got two houses you're renting now. Like I said, you know, we got boats sitting in there. Now we come across the 211 Pleasant Street. But to see his mess, we got to go around the street to Harold. And I mean, this is all within 10, 15 houses. We've got a smashed van, I believe that has a plate on it. We have, sitting between the fence and the street was actually city's property when you do the St. Clair County deal. In front of the van, we've got a Blazer, and I know that one don't have tags on it. In the backyard, we got a Tarp Motor Home. I guarantee his birthday was November. I guarantee that plates have expired. We probably got no insurance on that. Now we cross the street to 223 on Harold Street. There's another one. We get the homeowners, as of today, as I look, they're still, and I've been complaining about this one because I own 215 Harold Street. I like to spend some money and fix it up. What I got living next door and all the junk that I got around me, I mean, granted, I got some garbage in my yard because of my kids. But I mean, I don't have vehicles. I got three vehicles. They're all plated, they're all legal. Utility trailer's plated. Camper's pop-up is plated. My boat is legal. Trailer is legal. You know, it seems like some people got to play the game and pay. But like I say, you know, we're almost taxed for the last two years, a mil and a half. And where is my city services as a homeowner of this community? You know, I get nothing. I pay all my bills. I do all my stuff. And I got, you know, the police department needs to, you know, this will help you guys out. I know you don't want to go to the sheriff. You know, we need to start generating some money, clean the damn city up. You know, like I said, and I don't know who, 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 I know they're a business, but anybody ever been in a tobacco barn? I don't even have to go in there to know what's in there. You know, they're selling glass crack pipes, meth pipes, you know, bombs, you know, it's a headshot's what it is. They ain't giving no deals on cigarettes. You know, that's nice at all our school kids for middle school got to walk past this thing. Parents go to Hungry Howies and your four-by-four pickup truck parked in front of the window, you can see right through. So that was a hell of an idea for the community. You know, it's just amazing, you know? You're worried about 300 Broadway, one block, and why the citizens suffer. You know, there's ways to make money. I've been telling you people this for how long now? You got to make money. You can't just, you know, if you can't make money, why you asking me for money? You know, it's just a bunch of garbage. You know, and one other thing I like to talk about, our newspaper reporter over there, she made a comment in the paper a few weeks back. Understand you're a local company now? The mayor, Heartland Heating and Cooling, or was that just like a typo? She was doing the review of Mr. Turner's neighbor, the new music guy, McDonald guy, and in there you use local businesses and your Heartland deal was, in her article, that you're a local company. I don't know, I haven't seen any signs. I know you're out of Troy. That's not local. You know, and I don't know if anybody knows that her boss, circulation manager from the mother company, is actually on the Tifa board, which would probably understand why it's kind of a one-sided report as she tells all the good things but don't hit the people. You know, like I said, it's a community. And we got people complaining about maritime days. I used to shut it off from Broadway all the way down to Bridge Street. You know, well, actually, they're complaining about vendors, you know? I bet if I extended my First Amendment rights and put some signs on my truck and parked in front of their business, they wouldn't be complaining too much, which is a, you know, constitutional right of mine for freedom of speech. But like I say, you know, we're, you worry about two things. We got, in a short distance, I mean, we ain't talking, I scoured the whole damn city. You know, from the corner of Broadway around the corner Pleasant to Harold Street, you know, $500 fines to the slum lords. Fix it or you pay $500 within two weeks. You know, like I said, some people, you know, just, I don't know, you want to fix the city up? How's our property value supposed to go up when you got, you know? I got blinds that are tore up from my dogs because we got people that can't control their dogs. 222 is one of them, one of them properties. My kid saw the dog in my backyard today. Unleashed my two. Lucky the dog carried under the fence, otherwise he'd have been garbage.
Anyone else?
Alan Richly, 559 North Bell River. I'm here tonight after a lot of research that I've done. I have come to the conclusion that Marine City should not approve the tax hike in March because, well, I'll list the reasons. I went through and I received a lot of facts from our county treasurer and as well as the Equalization Board and the St. Clair County EDA. The current tax rate in Marine City is the third highest at a little over 42 mils. The average home value in the Marine City area is $81,000 according to the St. Clair County Economic Development Alliance. And so you take that and, which the mayor actually pointed this out, and so I have to give him credit for that, that you divide the 81,000 by two, and so that's 40.5, and you multiply that by the 42.6, that's the average homeowner pays over $1,700 per year for their taxes. And so the increase itself will be three mils, a little over three mils. That's in March. That's $123. That might not sound bad to some people, but when you consider the county roads millage that's coming up, that they want to increase another mil, that's another $40. The East China School District wants to increase taxes for another, a little over two mils for a bond, and that's $86. That's not including if DTE closes the two plants that are in our district, which will increase it by about half. So, or, it'll be another half, so it'll be over $100 if that happens, and they're already saying that that's a very good possibility that that will happen. The St. Clair County Community College renewal, the county road renewal, not including the increase, the Parks and Recreation and Drug Task Force Millage at the county level are also coming down the pipe. Now, the worst-case scenario, that's the best-case scenario. The worst-case scenario is if Marine City increases at the five mils, which is an option under the current proposal that I looked at under a sample ballot, that would be $203 for the average taxpayer. $155 for the East China School District tax, which will be at its highest rate in Marine City. The county, which again is another $40, that's almost $400 of an increase, which will increase the average taxpayer's tax rate to $2,124, but it doesn't end there. The St. Clair County EDA has said, they told me today, I just got this information, that there will be a 25% increase in the average homeowner's property value in the next three years. That's another, that's the 25%, which would be $2,655. My question about this tax increase goes to, I guess, the entire commission itself. And that's, I've heard from, one of the commissioners, I've heard on television that there will be a reallocation of money from, that won't necessarily go to the police. Like, the police millage and the fire millage that's being proposed is going to go towards that, but you're going to divert money from the general fund. And so my question is, where is that money going to go? And also the fact that, I believe taxpayers have a right to know that. My last question is, do you want people to live here? Do you want people to work here? Do you want people to invest here to be a part of this community and to continue to basically develop and innovate in this area? What is your vision for Marine City? I hope that you think long and hard about that in the future when making decisions, and I urge, I respectfully urge a no vote on May 8th. Thank you.
Just sidebar on some of your questions, I believe we're still under a gag order. We're not allowed to discuss any of those topics at a public meeting. Anyone else like to come to the podium?
Hello, my name is Janet Demest and I reside at 308 Ward Street in the city of Marine. I will be brief this evening. With that being said, I really feel there needs to be an examination of conscience. The budget for the police department has been totally out of sight for quite some time. We, the taxpayers, cannot stand any more of it. We cannot split hairs with negotiations. We should welcome and incorporate the sheriff's department. And yes, it is all about the money. No doubt you have enjoyed the TV commercial. Is that a Buick? Well, you know, a friend of mine rang me up on the telephone, no text, no tweet, to share that she had purchased a bright red Buick, the Cern, and would pop over to show it to me. As I teasingly asked, "Well, is that a Buick?", all I could think of was, "Wow, what a beautiful automobile." And so she said to me, "You know, this is a brand-new vehicle with top-notch suspension, but I nearly bottomed out on your street. What's up with that, anyway? Talk about a reality check. My street, as well as so many others, are in dire need of replacement, not just repair." I won't even go into the underground problems that we could be facing. My motto is, "All hands on deck. Let's get things done and save our city for the future." Thank you.
Anyone else?
Joe Moran, 710 Pleasant Street. I realize you guys are under a gag order and I'm hoping that the city, as long with, I guess Algonak and St. Clair, are doing something about pressuring Lansing to fix that stupidity. There's, gosh, five minutes. The budget for Marine City is in deficit. We're in deficit because the property values are not supporting the growth of the city. We have the lowest tax rate we've had now since 2009, yet the city's expenses continue to grow. We cannot fix streets with the current level of budget. The purpose of passing the PA 33 was to be able to free up money that is in the general fund that must go to support the police department. If we free that money up by passing the PA 33, the money that is currently in the general fund can stay there and go towards supporting the infrastructure of the city. Anyone who thinks that switching from the Marine City Police Department to the Sheriff's Department will save money is smoking something. I don't know what. The Sheriff's Department will charge us a dollar this year for services, pretty much what we might have now, but I guarantee you, next year, that fee will go up to $1,298. And the year after that, it'll be $5. And we will have no control over that increase. If we keep our police department in-house, we maintain control. In addition, we have our police officers, perhaps Chief Heslop, in charge of that police department. Chief Heslop is my neighbor. I know his kids. I pet his dog. He takes care of my neighborhood like he watches over his own kids. Do you think some sheriff's deputy that lives in Richmond will have that level of care in this city? Question. How many police officers are on patrol in Marine City every day? The answer is one or none. According to Chief Heslop's statistics, we have an officer on the road 17% of the time. The rest of the time, he is on a call or otherwise off the road because he's performing his duties. We have a city of over 3,000 people. We are inviting businesses all the time. We have new things going on in town. We're hoping to have new residents. A home on my block just sold the other day. How are we going to protect them with one police officer? In addition to that, if that officer gets in trouble, if he has to make a call that requires he have backup, he can't do anything unless he has that backup, which means he waits until someone from the county can come and support him. If that is your house that's being broken into, if that is your emergency situation, aren't you going to feel ashamed that you did not support this millage, 100 and some odd dollars for your average home? I can't help it if the federal government taxes us. I can't help it if the state and the county tax us. But I can help what goes on in my town, in my home. This is our home. Would you refuse to get your roof fixed or have your car serviced or do whatever other preventive maintenance your home needed if you had the wherewithal to do it? You want to be mad at Lansing? Be mad at Lansing. You want to be mad at the federal government? Go right ahead. But this is where we live. This is our home. And we need to support that home in every way that we can. We're not supporting the people on Water Street. We're supporting everybody in this town who has a stake in whatever goes on on Water Street and anyplace else in town. I commend Mr. Haas for his courage to come up and speak in public before this body. I commend him for the fact that he looks out for this town and for the people in it. I don't necessarily agree with him, but he has the type of focus on this town that we need. And we need people to do that not only with their awareness, but we need the financial support as well. We need to stop making political rhetoric at the expense of the few people in this city that cannot afford a raise in taxes. The overwhelming majority, however, can. The fact that they don't want to because they're mad at Lansing or the federal government or they have an axe to grind about the police department notwithstanding. You need to grow up. You need to focus where it is important. I'll leave you with one more thing. Don't crap where you live.
Do we have anyone else?
There's been a lot of stuff, a lot of interesting stuff said tonight, and one thing I really want to express is, you know, I've, I have been one of the people that have said time and time again, "Let's get numbers from the sheriff's department. Let's get numbers from the sheriff's department." From what I'm understanding, we do have numbers from the sheriff's department. And where we're at is, we have tangible information that's been given to our city manager and she's reviewed it and Mr. Highslip has reviewed it. And I personally believe that as long as Mr. Highslip can keep his numbers underneath the county's numbers, I think that we really should stay right where we're at with our, with our own police department. But eight months ago, nine months ago, whenever it was when we had the city, or they opened town hall meeting, the previous police chief was sitting there preaching to us that, you know, his budget was at $850,000 and you couldn't do it for a penny cheaper. There's no way to protect this town for anything less than $850,000. And that was chanted over and over through his little PowerPoint presentation and everything else, where we know that Algonak is doing it for $600,000. They've been doing it for $600,000 for multiple years. Their prices didn't go drastically up after they signed the contract, like a few fear-mongering people want everybody to believe. I don't subscribe to that, but I do, I do believe that, after talking with Mr. Highslip, I think that he's on the right track. He's definitely doing with these few officers... He's definitely doing with these few officers something that really needs to be taken care of in this town, and I commend him for his work. Eleven years ago, he was one of the first people that I've ever, I met in this town when I pulled in, going to meet my, my wife, which was my girlfriend at the time, and I got pulled over by him. So, I still remember that. And by the way, U-turns are not a good idea. But I, it's just, it's been, I know it's been a long road, and, you know, a lot of people have just wanted to see, you know, some concrete numbers. We've been told time and time again, "Just believe us, believe us." But, you know, here we are, eight, nine months later, and what I'm seeing here is, you know, these gentlemen that are in the back here, our officers and stuff like that, are looking at doing what they can to, you know, not go for increases or to, you know, do what they can to help out with this budget. I think there's a lot to be said there. And, you know, at Halloween, I saw these officers giving candy out to, you know, you know, kids on the street and stuff like that. That's small-town America. That's where I choose to live. But we definitely, everybody in this room has their own budgets that they need to live by, and I think the city is in the same boat. And I think that we're in a really good situation with, you know, Mr. Heslop, you know, commanding that ship at this point in time. So, thank you very much for your time, guys.
Anyone else? All right, seeing none, I'm going to move on to item six on the agenda, which is approval of the agenda.
Make a motion to approve the agendas presented.
Motion, support, and discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The agenda's been approved. Moving on to item seven, which is approval of the minutes.
Make a motion to approve the minutes for the City Commission Regular Meeting of January 21st, 2016.
Motion, support, and discussion on the minutes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Minutes have been approved. Moving on to the consent agenda, we have item eight A, which is a historical commission meeting from July 21st, 2015. We've got item eight B, which is a pension board meeting minutes. We have item eight C, which is Pension Retiree Healthcare Board Meeting Minutes. We have item eight D, which is a TIPA Board Meeting, minutes from November 17th. Item eight E, TIPA Special Meeting, December 7th. Item eight F, which is a business license for the Lazy Lama.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented and placed on file.
Motion, support, and discussion on these items? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Consent, agenda's been approved. Item nine A, Ready-to-Serve Fees, that's under unfinished business.
I make a motion to approve the Ready-to-Serve Fee Amendment Ordinance Number 2016-01.
Motion, support, and discussion on the Ready-to-Serve Fees? I think we've had a few discussions. Commissioner Simpson?
Just because we have played a crowd tonight, one of the things that we're voting on is to update the document that we had before, and it was, where the Ready-to-Serve Fee was added on the water bills. There is an exception that we're making for individuals that have a second service to their home. Most of them are used for watering lawns and those types of things, which don't require the sewage for that, so we're exempting those, so they don't sort of get double-hit with that charge. So, since we had quite a bit of a crowd tonight, so they just are aware of what that changes.
Thank you. Yeah, it was brought to our attention that, well, quite a few meetings ago, that people were getting double-tapped, basically, by having two meters, so this just corrects that situation. So, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's been adopted. Thank you, Board. Moving on to item 10 A, which is discussion on police, city police services. We have a letter from our city manager. Would you like to expound any of that?
I think the letter, for the most part, speaks for itself. I'm sure people have probably had an opportunity to take a look at that. I did a pretty in-depth analysis, spent some time reviewing all of the aspects of police versus sheriff services, and have come to the conclusion that now, really, this is not the right time to go with the Sheriff's Department. The cost savings were not very impressive at most. I think it was around about ten percent on average. And then my biggest problem with them is their future costs. They are still completely defined benefit, and we've done everything here in the city to try to control our costs moving forward. We have, in essence, drawn the line that from now on, any new employees, any new police are defined contributions. So, we know that we don't have any more cost for any future employees. So, in essence, we've stopped the bleed. We know what our costs are going to be in the, in the future, I should say, our obligations. So, that's what's brought me to the conclusion that, right now, we're really best served by the local police department.
Commissioner Avery?
I would like to commend the city manager for the very well-written, obviously, it showed a lot of time thinking, and I definitely read through, and will be pleased to support the retention of our police service in town. Thank you.
I'd like to commend Acting Chief Heslop and the City, Marine City Police Department for the work they do and, and the work done on this. Someone said that you'd want to cost for cost, and we were, as commissioners, presented with that by city manager Levin, and the actual difference in price when all was said and done, and the, I believe that's available to the public, was less than five thousand dollar difference. So, the, certainly, the service that we get is far greater than what we would have. We have a community police department that releases this community as part of this community, and I think that we all agree are very necessary and are doing an awesome job. And I do want to, I don't know, I'm not correcting Mr. Blanchard totally, but I did make a statement at one time about the increase, and that was facts that were given to me by our township, that there was a twenty percent yearly increase. So, I'm not trying to fear-monger anyone, but to give you the facts. So, we do have the facts in front of us, and I certainly support our Marine City Police Department.
Commissioner Simpson?
I would just like to add my support to retaining our existing police department as well. Clearly, this is an issue that's been in front of us for a good deal of time now. We've been talking about it. Clearly, the city manager's had much detailed work into it. We've, we've had several spreadsheets presented to us. There's a lot of numbers we can compare back-to-back. We've even received information, not only that compares the police department in Marine City to the Sheriff's Department, but also to that contract in Algonac. We're often compared to Algonac. Algonac is paying quite a bit more, tens of thousands of dollars more than us for less service. And, you know, again, I cannot commend our department enough. All the staff members, whether it's cadets, existing officers, everybody there. We've had a bit of an interesting year with the staff changes in the city, and everyone has just really rolled with the punches, and a lot of people have really stepped up, and those are the kinds of things that you just don't get when you're contracting services out. You typically see a reduced offering, but it shows also to us the importance to those that are in the field, doing this work, protecting our city, serving our city, that is an important thing to them. Acting Chief Heslop, when he was juggling around items in the budget to make numbers work, and no doubt taking on many new management duties, and I'm sure other folks on staff there have, have had to change and add quite a bit of additional duties there to just make day-to-day operations work. So, those are the kinds of things that we would totally lose, lose control of when we contract that service out. And as has been said before by a few people, once you contract those services out, we're really not in a position to financially, you know, start a new department ever again. You know, the numbers are in front of us, and it just really doesn't, in my mind, pay to lose that direct control. The things we're able to do with usage of part-time officers, usage of cadets, and full-time officers is a pretty unique position that Marine City is in, and that has benefited us well, whether it be the day-to-day service in the, in the community, or those, what we're able to do for special events in the city as well. And it's just to bypass that opportunity and to continue to, to take advantage of that system that was set up by Chief Tillery when he was here, I think, would be a foolish thing. You know, that's something that numbers doesn't even represent, you know, the set of offerings that we have right here. You know, we have our own station here. We're able to process anyone that is taken into custody here. You know, anybody else is probably going to likely have to go up to port hereon, which once again would take somebody out of service. So, all these number, any number of things, but I, I think we've done a good diligence about comparing services, and, and I agree with the city manager as well. You know, those legacy costs, the county just doesn't seem to have in check just yet. And anyone that's been following Marine City finances for any length of time knows how Marine City has really been penalized with legacy costs. It just happens. You know, that's kind of what's happened with the auto industry and anybody else in Michigan, but it's unfortunate that the county doesn't have that in check yet either. So, all these things really come together. I just cannot say how much I would support enough of keeping our own police department.
Commissioner Malley?
Well, one thing I did want to say is, are you going to be getting another chief, or is Officer Heslop, or is...
Well, if we don't go with the Sheriff's Department, that is our city manager's job to get a chief.
Because what I want to say is, Chief Tillery took a huge sum of money, and with the department having him gone, our budget came down considerably. And the way the department is designed, I believe Officer Heslop is doing a good job that if he didn't mind cutting the costs, you know, and being in turn chief department, but if you're going to hire another chief, you know, like Don or something, and pay for a car and other expenses, I mean, that costs a factor way up, and...
Well, again, that would be our city manager's job, her job to hire a chief. I don't disagree with what you're saying. I mean, the, the budget is way down right now. Nobody could touch the budget we have right now for police, but that's not going to stay that way. I mean, we'll have to see how it ends up once they have a chief and have a, you know, we're coming up to our budget workshop, so we'll get a better idea what that's going to look like.
Okay, because right now, they, they brought it down two hundred thousand, okay? That's considerably a big savings. And, I mean, if we can keep the numbers down, I don't have a problem with that, but if the numbers go back up to eight hundred thousand, well, we got to really seriously look at the situation that we're in. That's all. Thank you.
I'd like to echo what I've heard tonight, too. I'd like to thank our city manager for pulling this information together. This started a long time ago, long before you got here, but you did a great job of pulling together the information that's been requested and allowing us to make a good decision. So, I fully support your decision, and I'd like to also thank the police department that's here tonight for their work, that they do fully support you guys.
Commissioner Haddad?
All right. I think it's a good idea that we got the facts and figures, and I do appreciate the letter. I fully support keeping what we have and not going to the Sheriff's, because it doesn't pan out. The only problem I have with all of this is that a comprehensive report was not put together with the appropriate information. This, there's a lot of problems with this report that I found. All I would ask for, and I talked to Chief Heslop about this, I just think a comprehensive report needs to be put together to show the public all the facts and figures so that they can see it for themselves. I don't think it's fair that just we see this and the whole community doesn't see it, because the community is the one that needs to see it. They're the taxpayers. They have to see. They've been wanting it. People have asked us a lot of times. So, I think we still need to put something together, a good type of proposal, that everybody can see for themselves. I think we could have handled this sooner. My understanding was, the quote came out quite some time ago. I wished we would have gotten that sooner than a couple days ago. Maybe other people did. I just think that, yes, the Sheriff's Department, we have no control for contract talks versus our officers. We, you know, he'd have to purchase a couple cars. We already got the cars. They don't seem to do any negotiating to try to reduce their legacy costs, where here, that's been taken care of. Mr. Heslop has done an excellent job in bringing that budget back in line. I think they've all done a good job taking care of things. We do have mutual aid agreements that assist them, vice versa. They help other departments. They help us, one way or another. So, all I'm asking for is, I think we can settle this tonight, but I think we need to put a comprehensive report together, and I would hope everybody would want to see the same thing, with all the proper facts and figures, because some of these don't, some of this stuff doesn't add up. You can also show that we pay electric, gas, building, repair, and equipment rates. That wasn't included in the Sheriff's quote. We still have to pay that, so that's an addition to it. So, I mean, you can put together a lot of pros and cons, but it needs to be done in a comprehensive, nice report. I mean, we have a copy of what it would be for twenty-four hours, seven days a week, thirty hours, seven days a week. We have the copy of Algonac's contract. I started putting a chart together, but some of the stuff I didn't get in time. I was trying to put it all into one document, because I thought there was a lot of things to show here, but we missed the mark on that, in my opinion. We missed giving that to the community so that they can see it. So, that's what I'm asking for.
There we go.
Yep.
Okay, I'll get my two cents then. There's a lot that went on here that is the reason why there was a delay in the information coming out, and it had to do with conversations and agreements I had to make with the sheriff. And I had probably the most involvement in this than even our city manager, and I had made quite a few conversations, a lot of meetings with the sheriff. It took a little coaxing to get the numbers, and I had to make some promises about how information and stuff was going to be handled. So, it's not an intentional delay. It, it was my consideration of the sheriff and his requests.
Yeah, but that, that hurts us, because...
Well, we wouldn't have had a proposal if I wouldn't have made some agreements with the sheriff. So, that's what I'm telling you, that we wouldn't even have the numbers to sit here and look at and scrutinize. So, I did, I did the politicking, and I did the meetings, and I did the work, and I got us the numbers, and the numbers are, you know, they're, they're good. There's savings there. And to tell you the truth, I was fully ready to endorse the Sheriff's Department. I had, after a lot of meetings, I had, I had confidence in what I was hearing, and if I would have felt there was more support on the board, I, I would probably say that's the way we should go. But, you know, I do agree with a lot of what was said tonight. I agree with the fact that there's great benefit in community policing. I agree with the fact that since our acting chief Heslop has been at the helm, he's come up with a lot of good ideas. I agree with our city manager, where she thinks that working with someone like Acting Chief Heslop or somebody else, they could probably continue to work to control costs, where with the Sheriff's Department, if you look at the charts, and we'll get the charts online, we're going to make that all public. I got the okay to make everything public. There's going to be a three percent increase every single year from, from now till eternity, where we've had many years here where we've cut... we've had many years here where we've cut and reduced costs. So I'm fine with, with going with the sentiment of the board and staying with our community police, and I do also want to thank them. And I've had nothing but good experiences with them myself. So I just want to say, this isn't like the usual thing that we get accused of where we're all just moving down this one path. I can see a lot of benefit both ways. I could see a lot of benefits with going with the sheriff's department, and there's a lot of benefits with community policing. But I'm, I'm going to go with the sentiments of the rest of the board and, you know, vote to, if we have anything, come to a vote, vote to keep our community police. But, yeah, it's hard to explain. I can't really even tell you what some of the things I had to do to get these numbers, but just the delay in releasing the information to the rest of the commission was considerations I said I would make before we did release information.
Commissioner Lovett?
Well, thank you Mayor Skatarkic for the work that you did. I'd like to make a motion that we continue to keep our Marine City Police Department.
Support.
We have motion support. Any discussion?
Commissioner Avery?
I would just like to add one simple thing, that you can't necessarily put every bit of negotiation online outside their... It was stated very eloquently by a gentleman over 100 years ago that some parts of the government are like making sausage. You won't like to see it, but you'll like the outcome. Otto von Bismarck. So we appreciate that some of the work you had to do was to maintain confidence with the people you were dealing with. Thank you.
Anyone else? Commissioner Hendrick?
One of the things, too, is all this should be public record. Even the sheriff's information, if you went up there and asked him how much per person it cost him, is all public record. So why any of this was hidden, it was kind of, I think, kind of lame. But anyway, one of the things, too, is I know I talked to Chief Heslop about, we need to have a town hall still. We still need to address the issues with the public and how the public feels about how things have been going. And it gives them an opportunity to talk to the officers. It gives the officers opportunity to hear what people have to say. But I still think we need to have a good, comprehensive town hall on that where people can, if they want to submit something anonymously, they could, but let's, let's have some questions and concerns and, and what maybe people can do to help. I think that's something that we have to do. We have to work more on the public relations with the community. Because, you know, there's been some issues, and, you know, he and I discussed it, and he's aware of it. And the goal was to try to make things better, you know? So I know he talked about it. He said he wanted to try to do it after Christmas time, still in that timeframe.
Can I speak?
Sure.
Sure, come on up to the podium.
Yeah.
All right. Yeah, I have full intentions on, first of all, good evening. Full intentions on setting up a town hall meeting. Just trying to find the time. Two kids and sports and athletics and work and stuff. So I am trying to find the time to have that set up. So I am willing to meet with anybody who wants to meet and go over numbers and go over, you know, personnel issues, go over what we could do differently. I'm always open to suggestions. I had the opportunity to meet last week with Jeff Friedland, who's our county emergency manager. Him and I kind of talked about trying to form neighborhood watch committees. He's given me some pamphlets. I have to meet with Chief Langster from the fire department and try to coordinate that so we can start that process. So I do have some good ideas. Adding to keeping the budget numbers down, when, when Chief Tillery was here, that 850,000 that we're hearing was incorporated with that millage because at, at that one point in time, we were anticipating that millage. So that 850 was not, was money from that millage. So when we had found out that this was going to, you know, the vote, there was no point to keep it in the budget at that time. So obviously, that was easy to do, just cut those numbers out. It helped me get that budget to where it is now. So we are willing to work, you know, coming up, we're coming up on the contract talks. We are willing to work. We know the city's financial stress, I guess, and we're, we don't want to add any more stress to that. So we're, we're here to work with you. So, and anything that I can do in the meantime. I have numbers. If anybody wants to come into the office and meet with me, we always have fresh coffee on. If we don't, we'll make it for you, and we'll sit down and chat. I'm always open. Open door policy. So, any questions? Thank you for your time.
I guess I've, we've heard a lot of complaint about, you know, cars, abandoned cars, things like that. Are, we doing anything about that?
We are. If, if the cars parked in the easement portion or on the street, we are tagging those cars, giving them $48 a abandoned, you know, the big red stickers you're seeing. We're putting those on a window, giving them $48 opportunity to move those vehicles. If they're in the, inside the sidewalk portion of the area, near, near the house or in the driveway, that'll be your code enforcement. We have no authority to do anything about that.
Are you aware of any of the particular items that were mentioned tonight during the public comment?
In what regards?
There are some very specific vehicles and things mentioned, addresses.
Everything that he was mentioning sounded like his description was all on private property, which gives us no authority to enforce any of that. So that would all be on the code enforcement officer.
Against parking vehicles in front of areas, something?
We do.
That would be though.
Yes.
Building and structure.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
And I guess I'd just like to address the comment that my negotiations were lame. Yeah, I'm sorry you feel that way, but I'm telling you, you wouldn't even have any numbers. So I know this is always something you have to do. You have to point out how the rest of us aren't as good as you, or how we don't do our jobs properly. But I did what I had to do, and I made certain agreements that I would handle things certain ways, and that's what I did to get us the numbers.
Commissioner Hendrick?
The only comment, the only thing that bothers me about this, Mr. Mayor, is that we're all a commission here. And when you make deals, and none of us are aware of those, it kind of undercuts us because the mayor has no more power except for a few instances than the rest of us. And for us not to be able to get that information, it was bad. It would have been nice to see this sooner. Maybe we could have settled this sooner to keep the stress off them, that we could have done this a lot sooner than like two months ago, my understanding is how long this stuff's been out there. But I just don't think it's fair to the rest of us. I understand that you make a deal, but it's just not fair to the rest of us that we had to wait two months and then find out the stuff's been there, and then we only have two days to go through it. That's what I object to.
You can take as much time as you want to go through it. We could, we could go for the next two months.
This is for the public. The public has to see that this is all about transparency.
Put it online.
And it's, you have to put a better report than just this because this isn't all, you know...
That's what we got from the sheriff.
It's not what I'm saying. A comprehensive proposal should have been to show the pros, the cons, all the detail. This, this chart we got, the figures aren't even accurate. I'm not talking about the sheriff's. I'm talking about the one we get from the city. This one here, there's increases here, there's no increases here. I mean, some of this stuff doesn't even jive. So all I'm asking for is to have it reevaluated and don't just post what this stuff is out there. Let's have a nice little proposal that people can read through, something comprehensive that they can take and they can look at. I, I think that's fair to the public.
Commissioner Avery?
Well, Jim is first.
Couple things. I seem to recall when Chief Tillery was here, well, this started a long time ago, but you had spoken with the sheriff, and the sheriff basically commented back to you that you would not even make an offer while Chief Tillery was here. Wasn't that correct?
Yeah, it has nothing to do with power or anything. I'm special. I was trying to get something done for the city.
Just pointing out, part of the time lapse here was due to that fact. After the chief took a new position, I think you were asked at that time to go back and talk to the sheriff, right? As a board, we're not going to go as a board and go talk to the sheriff. Someone has to be a representative and go make some conversation. And nothing is final tonight. I mean, we have not even voted yet. If you want to delay the vote, we can delay the vote, right? Any, any one of us can make a motion to delay this, table it, whatever. You don't have to put it to, to rest right now. And I'm all for sharing the information we have with the public. And for once in my life, I actually agree with Commissioner Hendrick here that a little better, comprehensive report would be a good thing. It summarizes it. So I'm for that, too.
I'm not going to do it.
Well, I'm not.
I'd be happy to work on with them and our city manager to put something together that I think would be more acceptable for the public. I'm willing to do it. I started one. I even talked to you about that, too.
It's just now, it makes, ceases to amaze me how we, anything that happened here has to be turned into a negative at some point.
It's not a negative.
It's not a personal thing.
There's, there's no armor.
You know what? The, the...
To put this to rest.
The packet from the sheriff has been released. I sent out an email that I hope you all saw that said that, he said every single thing he gave us could be made public. He had no problem with that. So I think everything that he has given us should be public. You could put that on the sign. If people want to work together to put a, a nice report together so it's easy for the public to understand, I'm all for that. I guess I just resent, you know, do, you know, being accused of doing things that when, what really all I'm doing is trying to get something done for the city. And the bottom line is, I believe the chief, how do I say this? Would rather, he was a little bit better, more willing to talk to me than to maybe you. Let's just put it that way. So...
He's scared of you.
Yeah. The sheriff. Yeah. So I, I took the lead on that, and I got us a quote. So if you don't like it, sorry. Commissioner Avery?
I would like to point out a real simple fact here. We all made a pledge of allegiance tonight to the republic. We have a republican form of government. We are not a democracy. Democracies have real problems. So we have the power to make decisions that not everybody has to know everything about. Not every decision has to be made by everybody in town. So I, again, thank you for handling this in a manner that got the job done that seemed like it wasn't working before.
I kind of lost track of what we're doing. We got a motion on the board. And we have support. And the, the motion, would you repeat the motion, please?
The motion was for us to continue to keep our Marine City Police Department. Motion and support.
All right. Is there any further discussion on that motion? All favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. All right, moving on to item 10B, which is the proposed fence ordinance. Does anybody want to, now, this is, is this, what is going on with this particular agenda item? Is this an introduction?
No, you just wanted to have this on here for further discussion. You know, this is something that the planning commission have been working on, and they've presented it to you. It didn't seem like at the last meeting when we got the correspondence that you were quite ready to move into the first reading of this. So I guess whatever discussion it is that you choose to have.
Do we have anybody? Commissioner Simpson?
Yeah, I'll read that in the planning commission delegate from the city commission. I can sort of speak onto the process. The commissioner, the chairperson of the planning commission, Becky Lepley, in her letter to us, just sort of summarized the process. But really what we did, the planning commission was charged by the city commission with reviewing the fence ordinances as a whole to the city. So as part of doing so, we pulled the fence ordinances pretty much in one form or another all the way up and down the river, all the way kind of through Detroit, and reviewed what certain cities allow, what they don't allow, our similarities where Marine City may have had certain gaps. We had a little bit of a public opinion. This was over several, several meetings of the planning commission, so it doesn't just one or two meetings. But we had several individuals come and speak on their concerns as well. And so what we did as a planning commission was, just like we would do when reviewing any other ordinance, is we sort of weighed what we had based on the input we had and what we thought would be the best fit for the city. And that's what we have in front of us. As a reminder, just like anything else, nothing is 100%. We might find we could go in a different direction, but as far as what the planning commission did to review, that's, these are, this is what we felt the planning commission had best to offer in regards to what other communities were doing in regards to the entire fence ordinance. It wasn't just in regards to the one fence, fence issue, it's the entire ordinance.
What was the majority? The changes that were made to our existing ordinance? And we, nothing in here precludes anyone from having a fence.
The chain link fence, it does. In fact, it does, yeah. And that was an issue that was very much up for debate, that we received several comments on. And in fact, very few people actually provide for that when we were doing that research up and down the river, and not just in our area, if you go all the way down to Downriver Detroit and all those types of things, too. So you...
I appreciate all the work that was done on this, and I think it, it's a good ordinance. I did have a question on 2B. I, I'm reading that, and I, I think I know what it's saying, but I had a little trouble just understanding that. I mean, I think I know the ten of it, but can you look at that?
Can we pull that up and run it through?
Yeah, it says, "For the purpose of this ordinance, unobstructed view bordering the waterfront of St. Clair River and/or Bell River shall include an unobstructed view 90 degrees from the corners of the main exterior wall, most parallel to the water. Fences, walls, or similar barriers may be permitted by the zoning board of appeals. 90 degrees reflects a recent court ruling." I mean, I just, I guess I'm a little unclear on, on that one.
So the, um, the reason why we got so specific in that, there is a popular belief that is terribly inaccurate, that a resident has a 45-degree view of their property line. So if, if I'm right here, I have a view of that direction, that direction. That is inaccurate, and that has not been accurate probably just about in all of my lifetime. There's, that's been, there's, there's case law after case law that that is not accurate. There's some ordinances that we picked up along the way that have not, of other municipalities that have not been updated since, since the 70s that still retain that knowledge. But Algonax, for instance, hasn't corrected that in theirs. But that's a popular belief, is that I have a 45-degree view and I am entitled to that. We don't. You know, the, the, our proposal in our existing ordinance went in front of our attorney, and he agreed with us as well. You know, you're, you're entitled to a 90-degree view, which is pretty much straight out, you know, put on my blinders, straight out. That's what I'm entitled to as a property owner, not a 45-degree view. So a common thing that a code enforcer has to decipher when they're dealing with fence-type issues would be if someone had obstructed view on a diagonal. So if someone put up something that... Yeah.
You're, you're saying if you take the wall parallel to the water and you go to the outside edges of the wall, that 90-degree view starts from those?
Yeah, I mean, effectively, the widest part of the lot there.
Okay, because it's basically referring right to the structure. And then I was, it seemed a little out of place where it's at because it is just basically describing what is considered, you know, your view to be unobstructed. But it didn't seem to, I almost didn't seem to fit where it was at because the southern ones is considering corner and all that other stuff. So I don't know. Is, is that, in your opinion, in the right spot in this ordinance?
I think so. And the problem we had is, you know, the, the phrasing of all of them. Everyone got pretty technical. When we had several versions of this that was, that were less technical, we had a handful of commissioners that, that took exception to that. They wanted a little better definition, and that's sort of what we came up with. Again, just, you know, as a reminder, any, anytime you, you go through all this, it's sort of the best compromise of, of everything. So we, there was an attempt at, you know, getting more clearly defining what that, what that right is to the property owner. That was the attempt. You know, and certainly the city commission, you know, can, can alter this or anything, you know, if we feel that is unclear, or would give our code official a more precise definition. we feel that is unclear, or would give our code official a more precise definition in which to enforce. We, as a planning commission, had that discussion as well. And that was in the original letter, too, that, you know, the city commission may well alter this to our needs as well.
Commissioner Loeb.
Again, thank you to the planning commission for all of the work on doing your due diligence and putting this together. A few questions I had, I had answered already by, you know, asking Chair Lepley. But I just want to make a note, too, that it was 90 degrees, but at the same time, the fencing in the front view was only four feet high. So, I mean, you basically, you're sitting on your porch, you're still going to have more than a 90-degree view of the river. Just, you know, if you only look at 90 degrees, you might say, well, that's a terrible ordinance. But I think they've taken, from my opinion, reading it, they certainly looked at every feature that needed to be covered. And would be great to have something that we can follow.
Well, actually, it probably has more benefit than you think, because I've actually had these discussions.
Yes.
With neighbors.
Yes.
You know, saying I can't put something in front of my house because it's going to obstruct their view, which is.
We chatted with our code official about the suitability of this. He felt it was state affair. And as a reminder to everyone, anyone that has a pre-existing structure that might not conform to this, they're sort of quote-unquote grandfathered, for lack of a better term, to that. So they would, you know, be allowed to maintain an existing fence that doesn't meet this ordinance, because that's what the law provides for them. You know, if they have any sort of green belting, which would be like a hedge or something that doesn't conform to this, they would be allowed to maintain in its existing form. That's one of the more complicated aspects of this is that, you know, many people currently in these properties do have things that don't currently conform, and they're allowed to maintain those. That's just the law. There's nothing we can do to compel them to do otherwise. And for perpetuity, they're allowed to do that, you know. But it's just, it would be in regards to anyone that pulls a new permit once this has been adopted, you know. So if anyone pulls a permit today, you know, they would fall under this. If anyone has an existing permit from last year that is, hasn't finished their fencing, it would be under the ordinance from when they drew their permit as well. So we know there's a handful of those out there, too. So.
Go ahead. Change of ownership addressed, or?
As far as.
The house is sold.
Well, that's an existing structure, so it doesn't.
It's all granted.
Yeah, that was my understanding, because that structure currently exists and that, you know, so you can't compel a new, someone who buys a house, you cannot legally compel them to tear down a green belting or taller fence just because it changed ownership. You know, that, that structure was built, quote-unquote, to code or to ordinance at the time it was constructed, just like a house that might be really, really old and maybe had, never had the electrical service transferred over. You know, that was to code at the time, you know. And if they never had occasion to update that or take on any home improvement projects, you can't compel them to upgrade that just because. So same logic follows here, same legalities follow here.
Any questions?
No, relative to that, years ago, I had that same issue at my existing property where I was replacing a fence with, I had a wooden fence that was basically falling down, replaced it with a vinyl fence, kept one section of the existing fence, therefore didn't need to, you know, apply to, or have to fit into new ordinance, because I didn't tear down the entire fence. So I think that might stand, too, if someone has to do maintenance on the fence.
And I'm not sure exactly where the fine line is of, you know, what constitute a maintenance of an existing.
Right, if you get a fence that's falling down.
Or substantial renovation.
If you replace it, do you have to then replace it with a lower fence that?
Yeah, if it's a new construction, like a total replacement, yes, then you, we would have to require a permit and then.
That's what I was getting into. If it's not a total replacement, you don't have to.
Yeah, and I don't know, I wish they're sold. If you leave one post up and one panel up, I would think that's probably pretty disingenuous. But again, that would kind of come to the code official. Just, just like any other code underneath the city, the final interpretation is up to the code official, you know.
My neighbor at the time didn't agree with me, so we ended up going to zoning board and they did agree.
Yeah, zoning board, well, just like any other property issue, most property owners' issues are subject to zoning board of appeal. So the zoning board of appeal might grant that to them as well. So there is some relief and due process to an owner that might feel that they have a unique circumstance or something. And one of the other issues, too, that we.
Dave, overall, I just want to say, I think, thank you guys for doing a great job. You're putting this together.
We spent a good deal of time on it, so I know, you know, sometimes it's a difficult thing to do. And one other thing to point out, too, these are for riverfront properties were kind of the issue that we came in. A lot of people just seem to think about the St. Clair River. Well, there's many unique circumstances in regards to properties that abut the Bell River that were a bit of a compromise as well, because this ordinance has to accommodate properties abutting both rivers, which both have a unique set of circumstance that this ordinance has to apply both, to both evenly.
Is there any other questions, Commissioner Hendrick?
Hi. No, there's a lot of good info. I noticed that you guys took a lot of info out of the Clay Township.
And updated some of theirs as well.
Yeah, they had a lot of good stuff in there. Only a couple of questions. I took the original ordinance and usually what would have, I noticed that all the numbering is, we skipped 03. It goes 02 to 04. So we don't have an 03 anymore. I don't know if you're just going to renumber those.
Yeah, well, we, one of the things we did is we put in existing, to adopt the existing format, so I don't have that exactly in front of me. What is 03?
Well, the definitions, all the headers change.
Okay.
And the only, the only thing, I don't know if we could ask in the future, what makes it a little easier is if you take the existing and then you start plunking it in. And then, I know our procedures at work, you line out what you're taking out and you add in what you're, so that you can comprehensively compare.
Easier said than done, because there's a lot of new information that we put that would, you know, create subcategories and don't apply to both. But a point taken, you know, it's easier to follow what the changes are. And I certainly think we could do that.
There was one whole section that was left out here in section three. I think he had everything else, but this, this one, it was B, it says exceed four feet in height in any part forward from the extreme rear line of the dwelling on the lot of the fence. So what it is, is like, so you got a house here, and if you go to the rear corner of the house, that used to be the rule that you had to be to the rearward point of the house, the fence, that's where the fence had to be. So I don't know if.
So one of the things that the, that we had difficulty with when updating this was the definition of front and rear. You know, we saw this in the city commission, is that there are some people communitely define the front of their home, the river-facing part of the home, not the part with the driveway and that. So one of the terms that we updated here, or really created, was, was the waterfront portion of the home. We tried to adapt that to be more clear, because, again, there's some ambiguity there that, what is the front of your home? Is it what I prefer, you know, what I call the front of my home? There is no legal definition of that. So one of the things we did introduce when updating this to provide better clarity in several instances is create the term, the waterfront portion of the home, to really sort of define what our intentions were there.
Okay. One other little quickie on the, I looked at theirs, and you guys almost had all of it, but in section one, well, it's 02 here. Section B, when they refer to chain length, they say it's not obscuring, and yet now you guys are saying it's obscuring.
Right. And that's there, and that was one of the biggest issues that we went back and forth and we took a lot of community input on that. And that's not just the Clay Township one. Again, we reviewed many, many, many. And that's, that was one of the biggest point of contention or items we had a lengthy discussion on, was, you know, how does chain-length fence apply? Because that's what a vast majority of people wish.
You can't have a chain-length fence.
That's ultimately the recommendation, based on reviews of all those. Certainly it is up to the, you know, that is the recommendation, just based on the review of everybody else. If the city commission decides that that is something that we, as a city commission, wish to have, you know, the process for a planning commission is a little bit different. We're more data-driven and more review-driven. In the case of the city commission, we can be more policy-driven or directorial, where the planning commission has a bit narrow, narrow operational parameters there. We can't just say, we want to do that as a planning commission. We make best recommendations based on practices of surrounding cities and interpretations of that. So that, that ultimately was our recommendation, based on the review. But we realized by sending it up to the city commission that that might be something that people take exception to and that might, you know, cause for change on that.
Well, yeah, because I think it's, it's different in a couple of places. Are you going to use the, I see it says here, refer to illustration. You guys going to add that in?
Yeah, the.
Because that was a good one on the floor.
Illustrations were, that was one of the things that we thought were very helpful for people to be able to see those together.
But you're going to add it?
I thought those were in there, based on.
Not in our copy.
Not in our packet.
Because I had my stack from the planning commission.
You refer, that refers to illustrations, so I assume the intent is to have.
Yeah, there's, because this is the same thing here from Clay Township. That's why I assume that.
Yeah, my packet has, based on what I'm seeing here, it's almost the exact ones, based on memory. Those were the intentions.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
City manager can correct me if I'm wrong. And I know Mrs. Lepley's here as well. Certainly if she remembers anything different, please, I would welcome her to be able, the opportunity to correct us if I'm, if I'm misquoting anything. But that certainly was the intention, that we had more of a visual representation. Sometimes the, as we've already found, the wording gets too jargony, but.
Oh, this is a very good.
Yeah.
It's a very good thing. So I guess, my only question is that, and I guess, so that line is no longer viable, this, if you want to read.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, and my understanding, based on the updated portion, is that that has been answered in other ways. That, because that was one of the points of contention, since we don't allow the chain length and the four-foot, you know.
Well, I guess, this is just, this is just saying where it can start at the house. I guess that's, that's what I get out of this. It has nothing to do really with, well, it says it has to be a four-foot fence.
Right.
But what it's trying to tell you is where on the house it can be. You know, how, how far up or how far back can it be on the dwelling? And I guess that's, that's the only concern I had was that line, because it's no longer in there.
It tells you in B, one B.
No, this line isn't in there. It says exceed four feet in height in any part forward from the extreme rear line of the dwelling.
It just simply says no obscuring fence will also be located within the front yard or any yard that is water.
It doesn't have to do with the front yard. It has to do with.
It's a side yard, which is permitted.
I understand that, but.
Where the fence goes in relation to the structure in the, for a backyard, okay? That's all I'm asking, because I think that's all that used to cover.
It's my understanding, my recollection, is that that was addressed elsewhere, but certainly that's.
Yeah, that's my only, I just want to make sure.
It's been, it's been about a month and a half since we, you know, talked on that last, and that's one of the points.
I didn't see that in there. I couldn't find it, so that's.
You know, again, we didn't go line item by line, and we sort of recreated all of that, based on that. So that is a fair point to clarify.
Yeah, that's, that's the only one that I'm looking for. And then if we can just renumber, correct the numbering, I guess that's the only thing.
Anybody else?
To answer that question.
Would you cut the podium, please, so everybody could hear?
To answer that question, one of the lines in there is that that particular thing is covered in the building code. And therefore, so we didn't need to address it.
That kind of thing.
It's covered in the building code. And one of the things we were very aware of, too, is to try to set you up for going forward, addressing things like razor wire. Our old ordinance, it was all lumped together. Now you've got residential, non-residential, and view impairment, which worked well in the ones that we were looking at. But, yeah. And the other thing is, we, I don't know if you have the latest copy with the adjusted numbers. And the adjusted numbers and the drawings will, of course, be, will be put in, I'm sure.
No, I don't have.
It was, it was tough, as we were emailing back and forth.
No.
To get everything exactly as it's going to be.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
This is lovely. So is this still work on going with zoning or the planning commission?
No.
No, all right. So you feel at this point, this is final draft for you guys?
Yes, unless there's something in there, you know, like I said, there may be something that, policy-wise, Commissioner Dave did very well in saying that. There may be, you may have other reasons. This is data-driven. This is the best that we can give you in allowing, and our building inspector, specifics. When he goes out now, he, he would have an ordinance and he can, he can, you know, that he can use.
Yeah, I think it'd be forced.
If you think there's something in there that's going to be a problem, then you can, you can address that. But I really, I personally think that anything that would come up could be addressed on appeal.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah, I mean, you know, the amount of effort and stuff that's put in this, I think it'd be foolish for us to start rewriting it.
No.
But.
No intention.
I mean, just.
And to address, you know, a question that was asked, one of the last things, and Chairperson Lepley can correct me if I'm wrong, one of the last things we discussed at the last meeting that dealt with the fence ordinance update was that send it back for renumbering and inclusion of that. So, you know, if the numbers aren't in sync with here, there certainly was the intention that, you know, they be renumbered appropriately to fit in our existing structure in the, in the book or the publication of the ordinances. So if we skipped one or, you know, subsection B is not labeled correctly, certainly the intention is to label that, so it is. But I understand that your concern. And I'm glad Commissioner Lepley has a bit of a better memory on that than I do.
I think my copy has the correct number in there.
No, I was just going to make a motion, I make a motion to table discussion of the fence ordinance until we have the final copy front of us. We do not have that copy.
No, it doesn't have the drawings. It doesn't have the right numbering.
No, the numbers aren't right.
So I'll support that.
That's reasonable.
If you don't want to.
All right. So we have motion and support to table this till we get finished copy with corrections and drawings. Any discussion on that?
Yeah, just, when it comes back to us, can it come in the, in the form of?
Well, that would be through the city offices, so that would be in, yeah.
Of an ordinance that we can pass?
Well, you could come back as a first reading.
Right.
Introduction and then adoption over two minutes.
Yeah, rather than just a letter headed, you know, from our board, it comes to us in the form of an ordinance that we can move on, that's all.
If you're ready for that step, that would be proper.
That's what I'm requesting.
Yeah, so as everything is included.
I guess, one thing, I guess, procedurally, last meeting, this came under communications from the planning commission. One of the concerns I had in commission privilege was that we didn't do anything but file that. And so we brought that to this meeting for discussion. And I think the next logical step would be, you know, an official introduction, since what I'm seemingly hearing is that, for the most part, other than formatting and inclusion of proper numberings in the diagrams, is that policy-wise, the commission is taking no exception with, with what's there. So, you know, we, this was the first point of conversation after receiving that from the planning commission, so.
In better terms, yeah. That's what I'm asking.
Yeah.
Is that we bring it back as a first reading of an ordinance. Commissioner Hendrick?
Just a real quick, so, so for the properties on the point that have both the Bell River and the Big River, what's their front yard?
Well, that's, that's the thing. There is no legal definition of front or rear yard. That's why we introduced the term waterfront. And again.
I mean, they, these, these properties go from waterfront.
Exactly. And that's, the ordinance has to be applicable to both properties. And welcome to one of, one of the thousands of unique things that a code enforcer has to deal with in the city. You can't write an ordinance to exclude anybody, and that, that wouldn't be proper or legal. And so, yeah, again, that's when I, when I mentioned how we had to deal with adapting an ordinance for both rivers, that is one of the big issues that we came up with, is that concern.
There's 16 lots down there that all are.
Yep, and it's a problem, you know, it's, so.
Do we need to amend this motion to instruct you to bring this back as a ordinance?
No, I think that would be, the next step would be to, this was the first discussion.
I don't need a motion.
So let's, let's wrap this one up then. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, good job, planning commission. Moving on to item 10C, which is board appointments. We have the historical commission. I believe Maggie Micah. I have to fire my computer back up.
Yeah.
Because I'm trying to not use the tape, or I don't know if you noticed. I'm using all the nice outline features here and, you know.
I'll make a motion to appoint Maggie Micah to, to the historical commission.
Support.
Second.
Motion, support. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Welcome to the historical commission.
Margaret.
Margaret.
Sorry.
All right, moving on to item 10D, which is resolution, 2016 Northeast Bell and Anchor Bay Watershed.
I make a motion to approve the financial commitment to the 2016 Northeastern Bell and Anchor Bay Watershed budget and allocation.
Could you like to explain us a little? Could you like to explain us a little?
Resolution number 0022016.
Support.
I read the bottom part.
Sir, this resolution is, in essence, to support the phase-two requirements for watersheds in the community. It's a federal thing that rolls down to the state and rolls down to the community. It's something that we have to do to comply with the phase-two requirements.
Before we go too much further, we have any power to change the language of this?
No.
And if we don't accept this, what happens?
Fines and penalties.
All right, so basically.
And it's something that you've seen before in the past.
Right. So we have a motion, and we have support, any further discussion?
Well, just a question. In here, they have an annual update, 16, and then at the bottom it says, are we in compliance? Just, that's an interesting question.
Yeah, you say yes, and you send it back to them.
Well, yeah, I, I know how government works.
They just want to, they just want to know, they want to make sure that you're in compliance.
Yeah.
And if you tell them you are, they're, they're happy with that.
And send them on.
Right. Anything else? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The resolution has been adopted. Moving on to item 10E, which is the Contreville Township contract, we've got the sewer rate computations for 2016. Again, this is.
Just information.
Just information. There's nothing we have to do here, correct?
I can proceed and file.
Yeah, so is there any questions on this? Anybody? So somebody would like to make a motion to receive and file?
Make a motion, move on. Is that what you want?
To accept and.
Accept and file.
Oh, to accept and file? Oh, what you said, I'm sorry, I was, made a motion to accept and file the computer, sewer computation reports for 2030, 2015, and June 30th, 2016.
Any questions? Is there support?
High support.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, I apologize, I'm getting a little tired, I'm drifting on this. Item 10F, which is an engagement letter from McBride, Manley, and Company PC.
I make a motion to accept the engagement letter and place on file.
Right. Support? Any motion, support, is there questions on this contract? I don't believe there's any price changes, and the price is locked in for three years, is that correct?
Yeah, we're, we're accepting it, not just filing this mission.
Yeah.
So, we are approving this contract. All right, so we, we need a different motion.
I said to accept and file?
No, not to accept and file.
You need to.
To approve this contract.
We're approving a contract.
Yes, I make a motion that we approve the contract with McBride, Manley, and Company, withdraw my previous.
Support.
So we have motion, support, discussion? Commissioner Simpson?
I'm certainly in favor of McBride and Manley, they've been with the city many, many years now, and they've always done a very thorough job, and I always appreciate how they are very specific in the fact that they, you know, separate themselves as an entity, and seem to do a very thorough job, and their presentations are pretty informative, and I remember before I even came to the city commission, just following their literature and following the reports that they, they make public on behalf of the city was always an easy thing to do, and I appreciate that fact. It makes that, the information, I think, accessible to people, and I am in support of continuing the city's relationship with them.
Anyone else? I just, I disagree, I think, I don't disagree, I agree. They do a great job, and I think they've done a great job of keeping the price in line. I think for someone to offer you a contract with, three-year contract with no changes, price change is pretty good. So thank you for that. Do we have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Avery.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Lovett.
Yes.
Commissioner Malley.
Yes.
Commissioner Simpson.
Yes.
Commissioner Turner.
Yes.
Mayor Spicard.
Yes.
Commissioner Avery.
Yes.
Motion carries.
City managers report.
I have been at my conference, my managers' conference up in Port Huron this week, a lot of great information and vendors there. One thing I had some questions about in the past is about our professional contracts, and that's something that I'm going to take a look at, put together a list of the services that we use, and who we're utilizing, when the last time we went out for bids for. Sometime in, hopefully, the near future, I'll, I'll present that to you, and we can take a look at the services that we have, and potentially consider if there's any that we want to bid out. That's all I have.
You want to start us off?
Glad to see we made the right decision on the police, and that it was unanimous, we can finally put that issue to rest, because people have been talking about that one for a long time. That's it. Thank you. Commissioner Lovett.
I'd like to thank Mr. Haas and, and other citizens who see the, the needs in the city. I would ask that you let the building enforcer, building inspector, the code enforcers, City Hall know of those issues. They have a very limited time, they don't, he doesn't, neither one have time to really explore the community like they should, they're, they're very busy with, with many, many things in the short amount of time they have. But you need to bring those issues to their attention, so that they can deal with them, and I know that they have, in the past, done so. I want to thank all members of the planning commission who spent so many hours reviewing all the other fence ordinances, and put together an updated fence ordinance for the city. And I'm sorry, I'm going to be a little long tonight, but it's with a great sense of relief that the application for safe routes to the school grant has been presented to the Michigan Department of Education, Transportation, sorry. The last number I had was around $400,000 grant, I'm not sure of the exact amount. The final application had been tweaked from some of our original hopes because of MDOT requirements, feasibility studies, et cetera. The final proposal, however, will provide many benefits to all the students at Bell River, Marine City Middle, Marine City High School, and Holy Cross, Cardamoonie Schools. Needless to say, it will benefit many of our adult walkers as well. It's my understanding that for the grant application to get as far as it has, we have an excellent chance of having it funded. This project has been a multi-year program. About four years ago, I attended a transportation bonanza at, in Lansing where the concept was presented, and I was in a group that had an opportunity to walk the Lansing and visit a school where they had done safe routes and, and have some information. And Georgia Phelan had, had been a part of that, and we really wanted to get a safe routes going, but it just never seemed to get off the ground. After River View East had presented their banner project here at the commission for approval to put up in the city, and they put out the Little Lending Libraries, I thought, well, maybe I could get them interested, and it took off. Mr. Jason Steyer and his students did several walking forays, they came up with a multitude of creative ideas, they hosted working sessions in their art room for the community members who were interested. So over the last two years, a number of teams of walkers from many different areas of the community joined in the meetings and walking audits. We had members of the East China District Office, principals from Bell River, Marine City Middle, and Holy Cross, parents from all areas, teachers, the police department, Public Works, The Voice, thank you, Jerry Packer, students, members of the planning commission. In the last month, it finally came together, a special thanks to DPW Superintendent Mike Hitterich, and Tetra Tech Engineer Ken Kinsley, who re-walked the paths again and worked with the county and MDOT to finalize the plan. The grant would not have been ready in time without the work of Strategic Solutions, Mr. Michael Hillfinger. This effort has been a total community endeavor. It shows what can be done when we work together to achieve a goal. And in that sense, looking at the community, congratulations to Todd May and his new store, his smile on the, on the, the front of the Times Herald is like a kid in the candy shop. Oh, yeah, that's right, he is, in, in the candy shop. Greater and larger building for all his dreams. Good Natured Gardens has brought such touch of class to Water Street. Veer Grace Emporium has made the cross, gone across Fairbanks and is doing well there, and the Lazy Lama is coming. Last night I was at a chamber gathering at the chiropractic office, and Blue Pike Canteen had samples of their new wines that they're making there, that's why they're closed right now, because the place is just filled with the smell of wine fermenting. I'm not a winemaker, but, and I'm not really a wine drinker, but it was very, very, very good, and what a unique offering in our community, a boutique wine store like that. And Mr. Sapienza's Art Building is shaping up. Last week, Mr. Caddo presented the city with a gift of pavilion and new bathrooms to the beach. Mr. Coes introduced hiring of beach attendants for the summer, along with the premiere of the Great Alone. The Blanchards continue with events for maritime days. It just is a community coming together. But as I walked with each and every group, it's totally evident that this wonderful, exciting, dynamic city has some major problems. We found a city in desperate need of repair. Our streets and sidewalks are abominable. They're not just bad, they're atrocious. We rerouted part of the Safe Walks, the school program, because it's not safe to walk the sidewalk going down Parker Street, two-inch sidewalks, sidewalks not existing. So, what we've done with safe routes has accomplished just a very small part of what needs to be done, but as a city, we can do it, we can make our city better. We need to work together, not just complain, but come up with solutions, to make a commitment to see our infrastructure fixed. No one person or department can do that. The governor has illegally, I believe, put a gag order on, we as members of the commission can say about certain things, but I believe I can say this. Our city manager is very careful about keeping the budget. Every department in the city has tightened their belts, taken cuts in salary and benefits, cut budgets. There's no fat left, as someone told me recently. We're now trimming the, the meat, we're trimming the important things, the services and the ability of our city government to provide for the community. It's time that each person and voter in this community takes a good, hard look, asks the hard question, and make commitment to being a part of growth in this city. Thank you.
Commissioner Havert?
Nothing.
Commissioner Havert?
In the interest of brevity, I will relinquish my time, thank you.
I just want to make an appeal for folks to, to get out and vote. March 8th is our next election, and there's, there's quite a few elections, it's not just, you know, the presidential election year, but as Mr. Richly indicated earlier, there's a lot of upcoming votes, or potential votes as well. Why do I mention this? Voter turnout county-wide was for the last presidential election, and for those that follow that, presidential elections have always had the highest voter turnout, but St. Clair County's total voter turnout for the last presidential election was 30%, which is terrible. It's 18.2% for the off-year elections, which is, which is absolutely atrocious. I mean, there's, you know, I won't get on much of a soapbox about what, you know, rights we have in our country and what people have fought for, but people often come to us and say, how can I get engaged, and how can I make a difference, particularly the younger generation, you know, folks that might be in college, or, you know, a handful of high school students right now, often voice their concern about what can they do to influence things. You know, the younger age bracket, the mid-20s and lower, has the worst voter turnout. So I just implore and really encourage anyone that's not registered to vote, or may not have, maybe they've moved and they're not currently registered appropriately at Marine City, to get out and vote. The deadline would be this coming Monday, which is the 8th, to vote in this March election. If someone's hearing this on TV and it's past Monday, use that time to get out and register to vote. There's upcoming elections in May, and certainly the presidential election later on in the year, equally important, if not more important. So don't wait until you get closer to that election, take this time and go out. You can register to vote with our wonderful city clerk at the city offices, you can, any secretary of state office, the county clerk can register you, it's really a brief and easy process, just requires a photo ID. For anyone who feels like they might not be able to make it to the polls, or, or just prefers to vote via absentee, that's always an option. Absentee ballots are available for voters who are already registered to vote through Saturday, March 5th, and our city offices are going to be open Saturday for that purpose. That's Saturday, March 5th, from 10:00 to 2:00, am I correct in that? And you would just need a photo ID for that, so there's, there's really no reason not to vote and get out and vote, it's very convenient. Anyone who's not familiar, Marine City, we vote right here in the fire hall. I just cannot overstate the importance of that. I know in previous years, Marine City has had, you know, as low as 12% turnout in some off-year elections, and that's just, it's, it's a terrible thing. We're 2.2 square miles, no one is more than a mile away from the fire hall, and you can even be on a list to receive an absentee ballot via mail for any following election, so there really is no reason not to. I believe it was Mr. Moran earlier who indicated that, you know, there's a lot of things that may well be out of our control, things that are imposed upon us federally and even at the state level, but we do have a lot of options of what we can do here in this wonderful town, so I would hope that more people would choose to, to exercise their right to vote and get out, whatever side of any issue they might be on. I just would be happy that you get out and vote and express what you, what's important to you.
Commissioner Malley? No? You got nothing? Nothing. All right, I'm going to keep it brief, too, because we had two commissioners did such an excellent job tonight, so, yeah, get out and vote, so that was correct. Register. I just addressed a couple of things that were said, we can't talk about anything to do with PA 33, but there was a comment made about us, the wrongful termination of our chief of police, well, that's not correct, he resigned for another position in another city, so there was no wrongful termination. And the other thing is, it's, it's easy to get upset and complain about a lot of things and think that people aren't doing their jobs, but if you ask the, you know, a few more questions, you find the answers, like tonight, we heard a lot about vehicles that are not licensed, that are abandoned, this and that, why aren't we doing anything about it? And when you ask the man in charge, he gives you the answer, we can't do anything about it because it's on their private property. So before you get all up in arms about stuff, it helps to ask a few questions. And blatant enforcement, I do agree, blatant enforcement is something we need to concentrate on and knuckle down on, but it's also very difficult, because a lot of the blatant ordinances are very specific. It's, you're, we're, as a city, we're very limited to what we can cite as blatant, so it's not as easy as you think. And the only other thing I had to ask was the, we had mentioned at our agenda meeting that we were going to try to get the sidewalk program on this agenda here, and I don't see it. What happened?
We said we were going to do it after I got back from vacation.
That's not what I remember.
I apologize for that, and I just understand.
That's, that's okay, so now it'll be like March. do with PA 33, but there was a comment made about us, the wrongful termination of our chief of police. Well, that's not correct. He resigned for another position in another city, so there was no wrongful termination. And the other thing is, it's, it's easy to get upset and complain about a lot of things and think that people aren't doing their jobs, but if you ask the, you know, a few more questions, you find the answers, like tonight, we heard a lot about vehicles that are not licensed, that are abandoned, this and that, why aren't we doing anything about it? And when you ask the, the man in charge, he gives you the answer, we can't do anything about it because it's on their private property. So before you get all up in arms about stuff, it, it helps to ask a few questions. And blatant enforcement, I do agree blatant enforcement is something we need to concentrate on and knuckle down on, but it's also very difficult, because a lot of the blatant offenses are very specific. It's, you're, we're, as a city, we're very limited to what we can cite as blatant, so it's not as easy as you think. And the only other thing I had to ask was the, we had mentioned at our agenda meeting that we were going to try to get the sidewalk program on this agenda here, and I don't see it. What happened?
We said we were going to do it after I got back from vacation.
That's not what I remember.
Apologize for that, and misunderstanding.
That's, that's okay. So now it'll be like March before we talk about it, right?
Yes.
All right. Maybe, maybe we'll get it on the next agenda when you're not here, just so we could have the document in our hands, we could review it again, because it's, you're right, the sidewalks are atrocious, we got to do something about it.